The Kenner.
Is there anything around Apopka Woods? On the agenda of the town?
No, we've had contact with them and we're doing some scoping of their lines and stuff. There's nothing on it.
Okay, we'll call the October 7th Apopka City Council meeting to order. Have Commissioner Banksen will do the prayer invocation and the fact of the day.
Heavenly Father, we gather again today, we ask for your blessing upon our meeting. We thank you, Lord God, as you help us as we make decisions that affect all of the city. We ask you to give us wisdom and to do those things which are benefit to all. We thank you, Father, as we continue to fight against COVID, that we would use wisdom in our approach and that you would continue to bless us and bring those numbers down. We just give you the praise in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
October 7th, 1913, Henry Ford debuts the assembly line at his factory in Michigan. This new technique revolutionized the factory process by speeding up the time needed to assemble a car, thereby reducing the costs of the product. Assembling a car previously took about over 12 hours. Thanks to the refinement of the assembly line process, it took just less than 93 minutes. The increase in productivity meant a decrease in costs, thereby making car ownership affordable and accessible to the middle class. Sorry Chevy guys.
Yes. Okay, all right. Approval of minutes, any questions, any questions, concerns?
Oh, just, I'll, I'll give kudos to Ms. Bone for her minutes and actually putting in print where I said, dumb it down for me during one of my comments. Thank you for that.
Yeah, she's, she's, she's got them very thorough, for sure.
Very thorough. I would move to approve them.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Banksen, all those in favor. Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Edward, any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Mayor.
Okay, public comment cards. Anything, Susan, nobody from the public?
The only thing I was bringing up to Edward was this gentleman from Apopka Woods was here. I thought he thought there was something on the agenda today concerning it, so I'm not sure if you have an update for that.
There's nothing on the agenda, but if he wants to do public comment, he can do public comment in this section.
Yeah, if you'd like to come up and if you've got an issue you'd like to talk about.
We were told that a homeowners association would be here and it would be on the agenda, it would be something discussed. That's all accounted for.
So do you want, is, there's an issue you want to bring up to City Council? Or do you want to wait till it gets?
Do we, do we know what the issue is?
We've been working, we've been working with Apopka Woods Mayor on an issue that they have with their, their stormwater drains and our attorney's been working on it and their staff's been working on it. So it may be those discussions you're talking about that we've been having with the HOA, but there's nothing scheduled actually on the council meeting. The staff is, it's at a staff level that we're working with the HOA right now, so.
And unfortunately, the attorney's out, he won't be here today, so can't even give you anything or, and Jeff, Jeff? Any, Jeff could, nothing, okay, nothing to add? Sir, if you want to give us your name and a phone number, we could have somebody contact you if that would, that would help.
I'll let go through the homeowners.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you, uh huh. All right. So with that consent agenda, anybody want to pull any of those items off the consent? If not, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor. Aye, all opposed.
It was Smith.
Smith? It was Commissioner Smith, okay. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Business item, who is this one, is this?
Pam.
Are you Pam? Okay. And like to recognize, are you, did you recognize Susan? Susan Davis is here for St. John's Water Management District as we go through this business item, so Pam?
Oh, okay. Um, on your agenda is this business item, we're asking for a waiver of our procurement process in order to put the collage companies under contract to construct the turn lanes here and here on, that's Benyon Road, and this driveway here into the St. John's River Water Management District's new site. We entered into agreement with St. John's on May 7th in 2019 and part of that agreement was that if they came here and we got the Hickerson property, we would, we would pay for that. And at that time, we thought we were simply going to write them a check, but it didn't work out that way. And so we find ourselves in a position where we have to contract with a contractor. Staff recommends waiving our procurement process that requires something of this value to be put out for public bid, but because they went through the same process we would go through, and I think maybe their process is even a little more restrictive than ours, I feel confident recommending to y'all to use the same contractor that they're using to do their site work and building for us to build our turn lanes and that driveway. And I can answer any questions about that.
And that will make it just flow easier, it's all done at the same time.
That's, that's the whole point of it. We want, we need to stay synced up and I'll, I'll tell you, the, the cost savings just for staff time, it, it would be a lot. Their, their contractor and part of their process, they'll more or less be overseeing it. We'll do it just like we do any other development. We'll have our inspectors out there, you know, it would be the same. So we're just, we're just paying for it, but that was the deal.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that confused me on the lead-in part was, is the obligation only outlined in the memorandum of understanding? Or is there other contractual obligation around this piece?
The obligation was outlined or was, was placed into the actual agreement on May 7th, 2019.
So in the larger contract, not that MOU?
Right, it had to do with the exchange of the Hickerson property, them locating there.
Because I was going to say, if the MOU expired and it's not where, it's not anywhere else and they rejected the contract with their current contractor, why are we doing any of it? But if, if it's, if we're contractually obligated to it, is, is the answer to that yes first?
They didn't, they didn't reject, what they did was they just specifically took out the, this, this part.
Did they, did they provide any reasoning for that?
I was just told that there was one board member that felt like it was a better thing to not have our part in their contract. I didn't really delve into it, we have a pretty good relationship with them and.
Yeah, we, we just, we're trying to put it all into one contract, which, and then we just pay, it made, for us, I think for everybody, it'd been simpler, but St. John's, yeah, their, their board said we'd rather separate their internal, you know, parking and all that and the right-of-way.
Yeah, I mean, if we're contractually obligated to do it and they're using the same vendor that's doing the larger work effort here, yeah, makes sense.
And, and it also then gets us to access to the rest of the property, so then that's all then.
And they're, they're designing it, they, they changed the design a little bit so that we're already set up for when we decide to do something there, which is a little different than what we, what that originally proposed.
Yeah, I mean, my, my only larger concern is making sure that we're being good partners with each other too. I mean, we, we outlined something in the MOU, let's hold each other accountable for what we put in there. Else it's kind of wasted effort, but yeah, okay.
I understand.
Okay, any other questions?
And I guess my, my only question is, the difference outside of the cost of our staff, what we're paying for the construction role would be basically the same what we would have done had remained in the contract?
If we do it this way?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, we have a couple of extra steps like what we're doing right now and finance and procurement, we'll have to put together a contract for us to sign directly with collage, but compared to, well, if they had just done it themselves, no. It, it's, that's a real small savings, the big expense would have been if we had to advertise it.
All right.
Good, Commissioner Smith, okay. Mr. Banksen, you good? All right, okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Susan, do you want to come up and say anything? You good? Okay. Okay, look for a motion to authorize a waiver of the city's procurement process and contract with the Collage Companies LLC for construction of the access road for the future St. John's Water Management District Service Center.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up. Stormwater study, Jeff?
Good afternoon. Y'all may recall that you previously approved an initial contract to do a stormwater utility rate study. As the contractor got into it, they found that the work that was going to be necessary was quite a bit more detailed. And so we're coming back now at this time with an amendment. We reviewed their, reviewed and worked with them heavily on their scope of work and we agree that this is where we should be as far as what the contract should be and what the scope should be. Of course, naturally it went dead. Anyway, basically what will be, what the changes are essentially is with this rate study, they're going to look at what our practices are, what our infrastructure is, what our resources are, what we're doing today, and then they're going to work with us to determine what types of things we should be doing, particularly when it comes to regulatory, particularly with the municipal separate storm sewer system or the MS4 permits and such that we have to abide by. What types of things we need, what resources we need to do those, and then to set up a program whereby we'll have a, a method of selecting future stormwater projects that are based on conditions and needs rather than just, oh, this is a product we think we should do, based on facts and such. So that's basically the summary of it. The funding will come from the Stormwater Fund and with that, I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Any questions?
Just a small request, in section 3.1 where they talk about preparation of the rate study and presentations, is it possible if we can get maybe some sample ones that they've done for other municipalities that way? Because in a work effort like this where it's so large and comprehensive, I don't want them to prepare a whole bunch of stuff and it doesn't make sense to the council. I would hope that we can just get the study and give feedback so that it's kind of in accordance with what we would expect as a council as well.
We, we certainly look and see what they have. Certainly we'll have it in language that at least I can understand hopefully.
Well, and I don't, I don't want to go on record as having to say dumb it down for me again in the meeting minutes.
We, we can work on that, sir.
Right, okay.
Okay, all right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve the amendment to the task authorization for stormwater rate study with Raphelis Financial Consultants.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, ordinance number 2783.
Okay, ordinance number 2783. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from agriculture to industrial for certain real property located north of East Keene Road and west of Clercona Road, comprising 2.24 acres more or less and owned by Faircloth Family LTD, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Okay, Phil, any changes? No changes. Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve or adopt ordinance number 2783.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2784.
Okay, ordinance number 2784. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from AG Agricultural District to IL Light Industrial District for certain real property located north of East Keene Road and west of Clercona Road, comprising 2.24 acres more or less and owned by Faircloth Family LTD, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Any changes, Phil? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, if not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2784.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2788.
Okay, ordinance number 2788. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Joseph L. Sandronia Estate, located north of Bokoia Apopka Road and west of South Bradshaw Road, providing for direct directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Okay, Phil, any changes? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, look for a motion from the council to adopt ordinance number 2788.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2789.
Okay, ordinance number 2789. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by CHS Management Corp., located south of Lent Road and east of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Phil, any changes? Okay, anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2789.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2782.
Okay, ordinance number 2782. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from transitional T to mixed-use Kelly Park Interchange, MU KPI, and assigning neighborhood and transition overlay districts for certain real property located on the west side of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, approximately one quarter mile north of the intersection of Kelly Park Road and Plymouth-Sorrento Road, comprising 56.51 acres more or less and owned by Orlando Beltway Associates, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
All right, Bobby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Bobby Howell, Planning Manager with the Community Development Department. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of 56.51 acres of property from transitioned to Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use with a transition in Neighborhood Character Zone to develop a subdivision consisting of 202 units subject to the requirements of the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code. The property is located on the west side of Plymouth-Sorrento Road, approximately a quarter mile north of the intersection of Kelly Park Road and Plymouth-Sorrento Road. Surrounding zoning is, the ones that you see in the orange crosshatch are in the Kelly Park Interchange Form-Based Code District. Purple is transitioned, meaning it was annexed, and then subsequent, given the transition zoning, which is kind of a placeholder until they come back to the council for a rezoning. And the property is located within the one-mile radius of the State Road 429 Kelly Park Road Interchange. If any site or a portion of a site is located within that radius, the entire site is subject to the form-based standards contained within the form-based code. In accordance with the requirements of the form-based code, the owner has submitted a master plan in conjunction with the rezoning application detailing the development of 202 residential units. The master plan proposes development of property with 202 units, which 143 are single-family and 59 are townhomes. And the two-point acre, 2.4-acre non-residential parcel is located in the southeast corner of the site that is reserved for future development. This is the non-residential portion right here. The townhomes are primarily concentrated in here in the transition district and then this is the neighborhood district right there where the single-family residences are primarily located at. A minimum living area of 1,600 square feet is provided for the single-family units and 1,200 square feet is provided for the townhomes. Lot widths for the single-family units range between 40 and 50 feet. There are no minimum and maximum lot size and living area requirements in the form-based code. Access to the site is proposed via Plymouth-Sorrento Road. The plan details the dedication of a 30-foot wide strip of future right-of-way for Plymouth-Sorrento Road, which is detailed on the master plan, and that is right in this location right there. Within that strip, there'll be a 12-foot wide bicycle trail that will be constructed by the developer to help facilitate the construction of the regional trail system that is conceptually proposed within the form-based code area. And as you'll recall, from the Bridle Path Development, which is located to the north, which is the same developer, they have constructed the 12-foot trail already, so it'll be leading south and ultimately leak up with the public's site and go through the whole form-based code area. Roadway and pedestrian connections will be provided to allow cross-access to the properties to the north and south at such time that they develop. In accordance with the requirements of the form-based code, 20% of the site is reserved as open space. Common recreation elements include a community swimming pool, an internal trail system, passive open space and recreation areas, and the dedication of the bike trail along Plymouth-Sorrento Road. Right and left turn lanes at the site entrance are warranted and will be required to be constructed prior to the entrance of a first, prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Architectural elevations provided are consistent with the form-based code. There are conditions of approval that are noted within your ordinance and the staff report. The Development Review Committee and the Planning Commission both recommend approval and staff recommends approval and we are here to answer questions as well as the applicant.
Any questions for Bobby? Any questions for Bobby? Jim, I don't, if you don't, if you don't have questions, I wouldn't come up unless we get somebody from the public. Anybody in the public want to speak on this matter? Okay, that will close the public hearing and look for a, a motion to approve ordinance number 2782 at first reading and hold it over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner?
Second.
Banksen, second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Ordinance number 2791.
Okay, ordinance number 2791. An ordinance of the city of Apopka, Florida, amending the Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka by amending policy 3.1 of the public schools facilities element, providing for severability and an effective date.
Okay, Bobby?
Thank you. Policy 3.1 of the public schools facilities element of the Comprehensive Plan applies to developer-initiated Comprehensive Plan amendments and rezonings which increase the density of residential property. This policy of the Comprehensive Plan does not allow the city to approve either a Comprehensive Plan amendment or a rezoning which increases the density on a residential piece of property until Orange County Public Schools has determined whether there's capacity in the system to exist that exists at the time of the change or executes a capacity enhancement agreement known as a CEA that provides for capacity for that development. In 2020, OCPS stopped entering into CEAs with residential developers but are still issuing capacity determinations. Before, in cases where OCPS has determined there is no capacity, these projects would enter into a CEA with OCPS and then proceed through the development approval process. Now, for projects where OCPS determines there is no capacity available, they are inconsistent with policy 3.1 of the public schools facilities element of the Comprehensive Plan and they cannot obtain a CEA since OCPS does not issue those anymore. This text has caused residential developers to either withdraw their applications or wait until the text of the Comprehensive Plan is amended to ensure their request is consistent with the public schools facilities of the Comprehensive Plan. Staff is proposing this text amendment to the Comprehensive Plan to remove language related to CEAs, which they are no longer in existence and OCPS does not enter into those anymore. This language mirrors an amendment that was approved by Orange County. They had their adoption on the September 22nd. That's my understanding, the City of Orlando is pursuing the same language as well. The DRC and the Planning Commission recommend approval and staff recommends approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
So this still keeps the brakes on to a developer until OCPS approves that they do have the ability to house the students?
Yeah, they're still issuing the capacity determinations, so there's no such thing as a CEA anymore. So one of the options that they're talking about doing is this multi-jurisdictional approval process, which is in the county charter. Apparently the CEAs kind of were, took place over those, so there'll still be some type of mechanism to ensure there's no overcrowding in schools. But this, this element of the comp plan that we have, it's consistent with every element in the whole county. So back in 2008, when there was an interlocal agreement, all the cities in the county had to have the same exact Comprehensive Plan language. Being that there's no CEAs, they were taking all the stuff out that references CEAs, which is basically outdated language.
Yeah, so bottom line is this gives us a shield basically legally as well to say, no, you can't do that because you haven't proven there's room for the students that will be coming in.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Smith?
I understand the intent of the amendment, but when I looked at the amendment for Orange County in reference to the CPAs, they have a six-month verbiage where I don't see any kind of date, including ours. They're stipulated that their amendment will last from September to March of 2021. And so my concern is that ours is open-ended. And I, it's my understanding that Orange County designed theirs that way so they could go back and during that six-month period negotiate with the school board and come up with a plan forward. So why don't we have a date?
My understanding that the six-month was given for 18 projects that are out there that previously had approved CEAs. This, the OCPS actually approached us and asked us to revise our comp plan to take out the CEA language, just as the county did and just as Orlando is doing. So the, the six-month thing, as I understand it, is something that relates to 18 projects that were still in the hopper when all this CEA stuff kind of went down.
Also, real, real quick, in addition, we did have a Zoom meeting yesterday or a web, web browser meeting yesterday with a few of the other cities in Orange County and OCPS and what we're looking at doing, because we have a, a current agreement with OCPS and all the other cities do too, along with Orange County, is that with this multi-jurisdictional approval process, they're looking at establishing levels for approvals if a school or if a development affects a particular school negatively. And what would end up happening is that, of course, a lot of the schools are over capacity that we've got right now, but if, say for instance, we had a development in Apopka that affects a, a high school negatively, say it brings it up by, you know, 20 students over capacity, what would end up happening is they would have to get their approval through Orange County also. And if Orange County says no, if it's not de minimis, and they would, we would, we can't approve anything if Orange County says no and vice versa. If they have a development in the county and we get that review and it's not de minimis, you know, like one or two or three students, something like that, then they can't approve it either. And right now, there is no, there's no mechanism to allow us to approve it unless Orange County says okay. So they're, they're, and this will be part of an agreement that, in our local agreement, that'll take, take the place of the one that we have right now, which also currently has CEA information on it and so we can't, we can't proceed until all this is approved.
Yeah, I was, I was on that Zoom call with our staff, including Michael was on there as well and.
Yep.
So why don't, why don't you do this, Jim? Why don't you send to the commissioners the, the PowerPoint that Chris Testerman?
Yeah, we just got it this morning, so we'll, we'll send that.
Yeah, we'll send that to you and then we've got another meeting next Friday, Thursday, next Thursday or Friday, I think. Yeah, anyway, got another meeting to try to, you know, iron out the differences, but yeah, so. Anyway, trying to get all the cities along with the county to come up with a, you know, an interlocal agreement everybody can, can live with.
And by the way, when you do see, there, there's a, there's a list of different projects that are, you know, in the, in the county, there's three that are listed right up top. I believe two of them are already done and the other one, they, they with, they pulled it, the applicant. So those three aren't actually current, this isn't, it's an old list. So they didn't update it or, or ask us and, you know, before they brought this list in that PowerPoint. But we'll get that over to you this afternoon since the meeting's over.
Okay, I guess my, my concern is I don't want us to continue approving development and there's not capacity in the schools for these students. And we know, I agree, the old system was broken because even the dollars they set aside for the overage, unless there was an extreme capacity, they would not build a school anyway. They only simply put a portable there and the portable did, was not temporary, it became permanent. permanent. And so I don't want to keep compounding the problem that we already have. So we need to make sure that, that at some point, that there is a mechanism in place so that we can resolve this, whether it be building smaller schools on a smaller footprint or...
Or raise an impact fee.
Well, I didn't say that. Well, I, I, well, maybe I did mention that in another meeting.
Yeah, you did.
Or, or raise the impact fees.
Yeah.
But, but somehow, we need to be able to provide a quality education for the students as in our communities.
They, they've done, that's, that's part of, they've got a, the, they're working on, same like we're doing with our stormwater, looking at those costs. I know that, I think by the fall, they're supposedly have, end of fall, they'll have some kind of a, an, a idea to bring to, to county for the school impact.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're looking at the impact fees and, and how to make up the difference from the CEA process. Right now, as, as it sits, any developments or any property that already has land use and zoning in effect, they could continue. But what this does is, this definitely puts the brakes on any development that does not have proper land use or zoning to, that, for, for a residential, residential product.
Or if you upgrade, if you go from four units to the acre to 10, then that could also.
Correct. Now, if it goes reverse.
Right.
They, you know, goes from 20 units to 10 units, there's no problem because they still have 20 units.
Right.
But what this does, anything that, that we could possibly get an application for, we're basically turning away at this stage until all of this is resolved. One of the big things, and this is what I mentioned earlier, is that up until, and the mayor just mentioned it also, is that if we have a develop, or a consensus to increase the impact fees to be able to provide more capacity for the schools, until that school has the capacity, this process that we're approving, that we're going through for the interlocal agreement, is still going to be ineffective, we'll still put the brakes on no matter what. They haven't figured out how to, how to, how to make this work if they actually pay into the system to increase that capacity. There, and this is something that I brought up at the meeting yesterday, is there's, there's, if, if somebody says no, Orange County or us, there's no way to go around it, even if you paid extra money, yet.
Okay. And it's not that we're trying to, to stop growth, but we need to manage growth to make sure the infrastructure is in place for what we're doing.
Correct.
And that's all I'm saying.
Correct. And I just want to add that this is the transmittal hearing. We have to still send it to the state DEO. So you'll see this again for adoption.
Yeah.
Yeah, so to clarify our points, the, the CEAs are no longer.
Gone.
For perpetuity until.
Yes, sir.
It's not perpetuity, right? Okay. So obviously, that doesn't, you know, any wording that we do here is not going to change the fact that we're going to have overcrowding in schools.
Correct.
We're going to have capacity issues, right? So I want to make sure that what the language does, you know, whereas before, when we talked about CEAs, we always kind of transitioned the burden of that decision over to OCPS, right? It was real convenient for us to sit up here and say, hey, OCPS looked at this, they agreed to the CEA, so why should we stop this development if the, the school that's going to have the capacity issue is okay with it? We've flipped that on its head now, because now all of the burden, based off of how we're wording this, is going to be on us.
Right.
Because it says in here, if Orange County Public Schools indicates there is not, if there is insufficient capacity in the affected schools, the City of Apopka may take into consideration the severity of the overcrowding and the timing of the availability of the needed capacity to accommodate the proposed development when deciding whether to approve or deny. So the way that it's written is, we have the ability to approve or deny outside of any external forces. Is that correct?
For, for this portion, yes. But the interlocal agreement will be a little bit more specific in regards to de minimis-type projects. If something comes in and generates one student, that more than likely would be one of those conditions where Orange County would say, okay, and then we could say yes or no. I mean, we could still say yes or no.
So with the, the way that I'm looking at this, the business in front of me right now, I want clarity and quantification about severity. So when we look at this again, I would expect staff to come up with a proposal to say, hey, if it's above, if it's overcapacity by this number, it's this amount of risk. If it's overcapacity by 20 students, here's the, you know, some way for us to be able to calibrate whether or not we should feel comfortable in approving something if, if it's minimally overcapacity or something much larger.
That, that's, that'll be part of the interlocal agreement. You won't be able to approve anything until that's completed, though.
Okay.
So that'll be coming back to us, definitely.
I don't, I don't know if Michael's on Zoom. Michael, do you want to add anything to this, the discussion?
I, I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. I think more to, to add, aside from what we, what Jim's already gone over. So I, I really don't have anything in addition.
Okay. Okay.
Unless you specifically need an answer to something, but I, I think Jim's covered it pretty well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So let me ask, who, who's keeping, who's keeping track? So we have developer A comes in, and we say he's 20 students over, so we say that's minimum, so we're going to approve it. Developer B comes in, we say he's 20% over, and we approve. So who's keeping track of these numbers so we know that?
OCPS.
OCPS.
Yep.
Even after the interlocal agreement, OCPS is still keeping track?
Yes, they're the, well, they're the ones that will still say whether a school is overcapacity or not. That, that, that won't change. Because they're the, they're the keeper of the numbers for all the schools and all the developments, and we just keep them apprised of any, any development. But at the same, in the same breath, though, any development that does come before us will also, depending on how big it is or how the, how much of it, it affects the, the particular schools, Orange County most likely will also be chiming in. And for some of the projects that are on the south side of the city that border Acoe, Acoe might have to chime in also.
Yeah, if it's on the south, yeah, southeast. Or southwest, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, to expand on Commissioner Smith's point, though, it's the timing and pacing of everything, too. Making sure, you know, obviously, there's, there's simultaneous applications going on at any given time.
Oh, yes.
Making sure that, you know, as developers A, B, C, D, E, and F continue to come in, when OCPS is validating E, they're also making sure that they're accounting in A, B, C, and D up to that point.
They're looking at the, the whole picture.
Right.
If I could just, one other thing also is, is that, it's my understanding, Orange County is the only county in the state where you have to do capacity. Capacity only applies at the rezoning and comprehensive plan stages. You also have concurrency, which is applicable statewide, that's in state law. So that applies before any development comes up here, before their plat is approved. So there still is another mechanism to ensure that there is capacity in the system. And if there isn't, under concurrency, the developer has to pay or contribute land or some other like situation. So there's still, are stopgaps in.
Because what, you know, during the last legislative session, they passed a bill that basically said you couldn't charge, you couldn't charge above what the impact fee was.
Right.
What, theoretically, the school board could say, okay, we want $10,000 per student, and that's addition to whatever your impact fee is, and you don't get, that doesn't, it's not a credit against the, the impact fee you already owe. So it's like, okay, if, if you're, if you're not, the impact fee isn't high enough, just get it to where we got enough capacity, you know, enough dollars coming in to, to build the schools we need. But the other thing that's kind of interesting is that the school board has $500 million in reserves that they have, you know, for school, you know, building. And so they've got money that they could, now, I mean, I'm, I'm not going to get into the weeds as to, you know, which schools should be built, but they've got a lot of, a lot of cash that they're, they're sitting on the sidelines with that they could, they could be building some schools.
And, and I asked that question also, and from what I'm told, is that they have to wait until a school reaches a certain threshold.
Overcapacity.
Before they even allow to build another school.
Yeah, that's Florida's status.
So which is the first chicken or the egg?
Yeah.
Yeah. And by the way, we are, in fact, as, uh, Orange County staff actually pointed this out right near the beginning of the meeting, is we are the only county that actually has this in the whole state of Florida, this process. CEAs and all that, they, they got put into the charter for Orange County, and we have to abide by the charter. And of course, if you go back to try to change the charter, and it has to do anything with school capacity or, you know, issues with, with kids, it probably won't get passed. So what we're doing is making a fix based on Florida legislation to make a system work that probably shouldn't have been started like this in the first place.
Okay.
That being said, we're, we're working on it.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? I bet you my buddy Rod Olson wants to say something or not.
Not at this point.
Okay.
We discussed this before, the system is jaded.
Yeah.
OCPS approves just about everything that comes across. The county checks that.
Now, if you're going, if you're going to talk, you need to come down. Maybe I shouldn't open up that can of worms.
I'll be brief.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lanes of Apopka. No, the, the whole system has to be looked at. I want to look at this more carefully. Basically, for the first time in 15 years, OCPS denied, denied a developer, and we approved it, other than Commissioner Smith said no to it. And we were kind of under pressure, we allowed ourselves to get into a box, because we didn't, and with the, with the developer coming in, with the court recorder in the first meeting, they missed deadlines with the county, they missed deadlines with OCPS, they missed deadlines with us, and we didn't call them to it. So we put ourselves in a position, in my opinion, since your question, just the aspect of who tracks it, we need to make sure we're tracking it, because they missed dotting the i's and crossing the t's. I, I won't get into litany of portables, I, I don't plan to do that, but just the aspect of, we have to be in control of that. The fact that they've already, the development plans for the new K-8, if in fact it opens in 2022, already has portables on it. Our Wolf Lake campuses had 32 portables on the day they opened, and it hasn't changed. We can't continue to do business like this. I will be riding this pony till it ends.
And that, and that's exactly my point about, no offense to Mr. Olson, I just don't want to get to a situation where Mr. Olson's having to come to lectern and say that we misstepped on a, on a procedure, right? And so when we talk about this language change, I want to have more concrete, because we're, we're basically the leading edge of the risk, right? The first, the first pass in us making a determination of a developer going forward is going to be this determination, right? Because when they come, if they want a land use change, the first thing that we're going to do is say, hey, OCPS, do we have the capacity to support this land use change? And if their, if their comeback is to say, this is going to create X amount of capacity overage, what's our next step? You know, because we could sit here and say, yeah, we approved this development, we're going to have Mr. Olson and, and the, and the world coming to us and saying, well, why did you do that? And rightfully so. And we should be able to say, we should be able to point to something that says, hey, if it's overcapacity by this much, we feel comfortable making this decision based off of these facts. And that's, that's where I want to make sure that we're all buttoned up there to make sure that, you know, we, we make those right decisions.
Understood. Okay. All right. Anybody else from the public wish to speak on this matter?
Just one more.
Rod Olson again, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane. I think this is a matter that can be, OCPS has a formula, single-family home, apartments and all that. I think that formula, I'm in process right now at home with an Excel spreadsheet, so anytime something comes forward, it'll tell me, we've got X number of students based on their formula. And I think that's a formula that we should be using, sueno upfront. It's going to be two students or 22 students.
Yep. Okay. All right.
And, and not to belabor the point, that's fine, but that's used to determine the, the enhancement capacity agreement, right? And the dollars that would be assigned for that agreement. What I'm trying to say is that if, and even in that case, if they're overcapacity, we've typically approved those projects to go forward if they've entered into those types of agreements. And those types of agreements are entered into because there's a monetary benefit to doing so. Hey, I'm going to get X amount of dollars from the developer to create this capacity long-term. We're throwing out the economics of it upfront, we're simply going to be making a decision about whether or not we accept the risk of overcapacity at the time that they are going for the land use change. Is that correct statement?
It would be a fair statement, yes.
Right. And so that's, that's the thing where a dollar value's not associated to it, it's just whether or not we feel fundamentally, are we okay with X amount of overcapacity in our schools, knowing that OCPS is going to have to pull some weight to make sure that they build that capacity in a reasonable amount of time? That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Anybody from public? Anybody else public wants to speak? All right. If not, close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2791 at first reading and hold it over for second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Becker?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banksen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2792.
Ordinance number 2792. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from agricultural to industrial for certain real property located east of Clerkona Road and north of Stone Road, comprising .99 acres, more or less, and owned by Randall Real Estate Investment, Inc., providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Okay. Phil?
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. Phil Martinez, Planner II with City's Planning Division. The applicant is proposing a small-scale future land use amendment from agriculture to industrial for approximately .99 acres. The subject property is highlighted in yellow, and to the north, east, and south are retention areas, along with the state route 414. And to the west are the former Nelson &amp; Sons nurseries. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property to IL Light Industrial District, which will be presented at the next agenda item. And the proposed industrial future land use is compatible with the previously mentioned IL zoning. In addition, industrially zoned or industrially oriented parcels are in the vicinity. The Development Review Committee and Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed small-scale future land use amendment from agriculture to industrial, and the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2792 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on October 21st, 2020. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I are available to address any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Phil? Okay. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2792 at first reading and hold it over for second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2793.
Okay. Ordinance number 2793. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from AG Agricultural District to IL Light Industrial District for certain real property located east of Clerkona Road and north of Stone Road, comprising .99 acres, more or less, and owned by Randall Real Estate Investments, Inc., providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Phil?
The applicant is proposing a rezoning from agriculture districts to light industrial districts for the same subject property as the previous agenda item. And the proposed IL or light industrial zoning is compatible with the previously proposed industrial future land use. The Development Review Committee and Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed rezoning from agriculture to light industrial, and the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2793 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on October 21st, 2020. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I are available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Phil? Anybody from public wishes to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2793 at first reading and hold it over for second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Ordinance number 2794.
Okay. Ordinance number 2794. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated in being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Mid-Florida Freezer Properties, LLC, located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Lakeview Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Phil?
The applicant is proposing to annex approximately .52 acres located south of West Orange Blossom Trail and west of Lakeview Drive. The subject property is highlighted in yellow on the right map and consists of a retail store. This proposed annexation is in accordance with Florida statutes and the joint planning agreement between the City of Apopka and Orange County. The Development Review Committee recommends approval of the proposed annexation, and the recommended motion for this afternoon is to accept the first reading of ordinance number 2794 and hold it over for second reading and adoption on October 21st, 2020. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and I are available for any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Phil? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing and look for a motion to approve ordinance number 2794 at first reading and hold it over for a second reading and adoption.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2020-31, purchasing policy.
Resolution number 2020-31. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending city administrative policy for procurement and providing an effective date.
Hello. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So my name is Jessica Pugh. I am the Purchasing Administrator for Apopka, and today I'll be presenting the updates to our policy on the agenda. Okay, so first we, oh, on the sides? Okay. So first, we just wanted to give a brief history of what we've been working on in procurement for the last two years since I've held the position. The first year, our main focus was actually to concentrate on our current purchasing policy and make sure that all of our staff understood the policy and that we had appropriate levels of procedures and authorization. Our second year, we focused on piggyback contracts and blanket purchase orders, making sure that we could operate as efficiently as possible. We also identified any needed changes from the current policy for the new one to propose what resulted in the policy that we have today. So in our data and research, we started what was required. Any Florida statutes that had changed for threshold purposes or any Florida administrative code changes that needed to be included. Any operational functions, like I'd said previously, that just weren't working any longer were also addressed. And then, of course, we reached out to the central Florida area municipalities just to see what their policies and procedures were and what was working for them. On the language, we held the four cities that you see on the PowerPoint, Akoi, Lake Mary, Clermont, and Winter Garden. That's what we based most of our language off of that you'll see in the policy today. No particular reason other than that we preferred how they wrote it. During the research process, we found that the thresholds varied based on multiple items, population size, the budget and staffing levels, development and capital projects. It seemed to be the more the city had going on, the higher threshold that it held. And we also found that the last time that the thresholds were changed for the City of Apopka was in 2005. So it's been about a good 15 years since we've actually changed those dollar thresholds. We've listed here everything that we've added, changed, and merged for the document. The majority of the additions were actually addressing requirements, procedures, authorization and control functions, and the new column. In the updated section, we focused on operational and clarity for what we currently held in the policy. And then the last section, we had two policies that were actually individually separated for procurement, which we felt were best addressed actually in the purchasing policy rather than by themselves. One of the items on the new section is capital outlay. The Florida administrative code recently changed where the asset level was $1,000 and it increased to $5,000. So in the proposed policy, we have that update as well. The positions and roles that you see on the screen is just to identify that we made sure to define each role and that we addressed their authorization levels throughout the policy wherever they applied. The most important piece to our threshold increase was some of the data that we pulled from surrounding cities. So you can see on the screen that we have 16 additional cities. Apopka's the second from the left. They range from $25,000 formal solicitation threshold all the way up to $100,000. The columns in the yellow are actually Orange County, the only ones that we didn't include for Orange County or anyone that we wouldn't find applicable, like Windermere or Belle Isle, just because they weren't in comparison. The cities that are listed in the middle are at a $50,000 threshold. There are 11 of them. You can see two to the left, Ultimont Springs and Mount Dora were two that we sampled. One was at $25,000 threshold and the other one at 35. They're actually actively seeking to increase their threshold levels as well to 50,000. So we had a lot of support there data-wise for our increase. We're asking for proposed changes in the threshold dollar amounts, and so I wanted to just briefly go over what our current policy holds. Our department director, purchasing administrator, and city administrator are the authorization level approvers for each level. The first being any purchases under $2,500 are allowed to go through with just a verbal quote and proof of cost. $2,500 to $24,999.99 are three written quotes. And then our formal solicitation level is currently at 25,000, and any of those have to come to City Council for approval. What we've done is we've mimicked the authorization levels that you see on the proposed section, and we've increased the levels on the left-hand side. So our verbal quotes and proof of costs are up to 5,000. We've added a level for two written quotes for 5,000 to 14,999. And then we've also had the three written quotes from 15,000 all the way up to 49,999. Our formal solicitation level would be 50,000, and then, of course, City Council would also approve that level. We wanted to pull some data so you could see what this would look like to make the change or what the numbers actually look like from a standpoint of the vendors. So out of 1,201 vendors that we've provided payment for in fiscal year 2020 on the left-hand side, you can see 162 of those vendors breached the $25,000 annual threshold. If you look on the right-hand side for proposed policy, you can see that 5% of those, or 56 approximately, are between 25 and $50,000. So the change to the 50,000 would only affect approximately 5%, and that's about 56 vendors. And even though that number is a little low, if you take into consideration, 56 vendors would meet formal solicitation requirements, you'd have to advertise, go through the evaluation process where appropriate, and come back to council. So you'd be talking a lot of time saved there. Our piggyback contracts. So in definition, these are contracts from other governmental entities or cooperative alliances that have already done their due diligence for advertising and execution of contracts. And so we're able to actually jump onto their contracts as long as they're for the same terms and conditions and scope of services. Currently in our policy, we're required to come back to City Council every time our $25,000 threshold is breached. So you may be familiar with a template that you see very often on the City Council agenda where we're coming to ask for threshold dollar amounts. Out of the 170 items that we brought to council in this last fiscal year, over half of those were piggyback contracts. So what we've proposed is actually to put into the language that we bring piggyback contracts for execution and budgetary, appropriate budgetary funding. So that way, the departments can actively use the contract without having to come back and forth to City Council for further authorization. Our change order amounts changed slightly procedural-wise. Operational change orders, we added in a level of authorization for the director, purchasing administrator, and the finance director. Anything below $15,000, and that's not additional dollar amounts, but an actual total purchase order dollar amount, can be done at the finance department level without the administrator signing off. We can also close purchase orders and change vendor names without the additional approval of the city administrator. Anything that breaches 15,000 to 49,999.99 would also would require the city administrator's approval. For capital project change orders above $50,000, this would still require City Council approval. However, the city administrator would hold 10%, the authority to have 10% increase on contractual project costs, up to $50,000, whichever is less. We actually didn't change this very much from the previous policy that we hold now. We took a slight bit of the language out, but it's very similar. And then any 10% increases that happen above that dollar threshold would have to come back to City Council for further approval. If you take a motion to approve today, we have just some slight changes to the policy that was posted with the agenda. The first one is, with our excitement in creating the policy, we left out one sentence just to strongly encourage our staff to use any vendors who have prompt payment discounts where available. And then while we were creating the procedures, we actually had placed in the policy a 25% not-to-exceed-dollar amount for original contracts. Our city administrators' authority level of 10% would never allow us to get to 25%. So this was just redundant. So we've stricken it out of the policy. And then in conclusion, we think that the policy that we brought forward today improves the procedure and processing for the vendor all the way through for council. We believe it strengthens our positions and will allow for the city to operate more efficiently in the future. We also have just a side note, if this would be approved today, our new focus would be to locate procurement software and also to create better automation within the department. Those are my highlights. If anybody has any questions.
Were you able to find out when we originally established that $25,000 threshold?
Yeah. So it was in 2005. It was 15 years ago.
Okay.
So we've grown a little bit since then.
Yeah. I love it. I love the standards for it. It seems that it's tightening up a lot of loose ends. And is this going to be any kind of a learning curve for how different things are procured through different departments? Are there different ones that are going to have to change a lot of their habits or add or be held a little tighter to good habits? Because I think that's key, especially as we continue to grow. This is real key.
Yes. We agree, actually. The first year that we were here, we tried to implement training as a regular process. And so if this was adopted, we have plans this month to actually sit with the staff and schedule out time so that they're able to identify all the changes that have happened.
Okay. And again, I think it just shows all the other cities where that same threshold is. I think it's a good move.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
The only question I had was in reference to the training, and you did a great job, very great presentation, but you left out the music I requested.
I made it specially colorful to keep it interesting.
Commissioner Becker?
No, I was going to say, you know, when you listen to sports talk radio, when someone calls in and has a good take, they say, rack it, you know, so they can come back to it. This is like the gold standard of presentations that I've seen thus far during my time here. So the presentation's just excellent. It's just well laid out and easy to consume. But equally important is the substance, right? I mean, just the benchmarking that was done. I did a little bit myself, and, you know, it's, you know, we don't want to go to Orlando, right, for 100K, but, you know, it seems like it's all in line with what other municipalities are doing. So kudos to you and your team for putting together a good sound policy and presentation to articulate it, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate it.
Just for the audience, probably, can you just kind of give them, like, for the public, what it takes to do a full-blown RFP, just so you know what this is going to, I mean, time-wise and effort?
Absolutely.
Because I think that's the, you know, by raising the bar, we, obviously, a lot of these contracts won't require a full RFP, but in the balance of that was, we've got better procedures in place to make sure that we're, you know, we're dotting all our i's and crossing our t's. So kind of just talk a little bit about what it takes to get something through the process.
Yeah, sure. So on average, any one solicitation can take between 30 and 90 days. And that's from the inception of creating the actual scope of services, getting it advertised, and then also monitoring all the paperwork that goes in between. So once we receive submittals back from the advertisement, depending on what type of solicitation it is, we have to review those documents. If it's an evaluation committee, we have to post what the dates are to get the committee back together, discuss any items. Recently, we've had a few that the committee needed clarification. So you have to coordinate back and forth with the vendor for clarification questions or more information so that they can determine the best decision moving forward. You then have to post on our procurement platform what you're doing at all times, pretty much, and make sure that everybody is aware of the same information. There's the cone of silence that only allows you to speak in a public forum. We've been doing a lot of that processing through video conference. And then the requirement of coming back to City Council. And then thereafter, once it's approved, we're in charge of making sure that the contract actually goes through. So we create the contracts, we work with the city attorney to do so, and then we go back and forth with making sure that all the insurance and everything is executed before any of the projects or procurement can actually start. So like I said, any one solicitation can be within that timeframe. And if you're looking at that, that we're actually able to get, you know, in any given month, maybe three to four out, is a large amount of solicitations, even though it doesn't look like it from the other side.
Yeah.
I would like to add one thing there, Jamie Roberson, Finance Director. On average, like when we called around and checked with other municipalities, when they have a person that's only doing RFPs or bids or for competitive processing, they average on average about two per month. And that's when the person is only doing RFPs and bids. Please keep in mind that Jessica is one person, and she does other duties as well. So we're hoping that this policy allows us that flexibility to enhance and strengthen those procurement areas. We also have Giselle, who was an intricate part of putting this policy together, who is the independent contractor that you guys approved in our budget, that helps us do those types of things as well. But again, it is a collective effort amongst several of us within finance to accomplish those. We've been relatively busy the last month and a half with all the solicitations that y'all have approved and awarded since the beginning of August, so.
I believe, as Jamie said too, this is probably our largest accomplishment that we've had in procurement, is to get the policy approved operationally, that it'll function better. And then we'll be able to work on things like software to improve our processing and shorten our time periods and help us manage and be able to get out as many as we possibly can. So we're improving.
Thank you, Jessica. That's awesome. Thank you, thank you.
And one more, and I forgot, I had one highlighted, just for a point of clarification. On 107.34, the unauthorized purchases and contracts, I just want to validate that sentence is written properly. It says, "It shall be prohibited for any city employee to order the purchase of, enter, or make any contract for materials, supplies, and services within the purchasing approval limit of the purchasing administrator, city administrator, designate, or city council." It seems like a contradictory kind of sentence to me. I don't know.
Could you state what section that is again?
So 107 dot 3 dot 4. To me, it should read prohibited if they're outside of the purchasing approval limit. Or maybe I'm just reading that wrong.
So I think that this portion of the policy was intended to not allow any of the employees to authorize any type of contracts on their own.
Yeah.
So they can't actually, the authorization process that we've shown in the PowerPoint today, we're the only ones authorized at those levels.
So I'm trying to wear my Michael attorney hat. So because all of those positions are technically city employees, right? So we're going to draw the distinction between a regular city employee and a named titled person. I just want to make sure that we're covered from a legal perspective. That's it. If you think it's written properly.
Michael, have you got that one?
No, it's clear, it's just not, as was stated, it's not to allow employees to make purchases on their own, but that all purchasing has to go through the procurement process.
Okay. Then I'm good.
Good. Okay. Awesome. All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
And I look for a motion to approve resolution 2020-31.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2020-32.
Resolution 2020-32. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2019, and ending September 30th, 2020, providing for a budget amendment.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mayor, this is Jamie Roberson, Finance Director. So the first budget amendment that you have before you is actually to make the appropriations for the additional increase in the Roth-Tellus contract, and this is coming from the 2020 fiscal year and not the 2021 fiscal year. So there was a little bit of change order involved, and it's a little bit different than the original proposal because we had a 5% contingency built into the previous proposal for that. So this amendment is only for $118,412.
Okay. Any questions for Jamie? Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing, look for a motion to approve resolution 2020-32.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, resolution 2020-33.
Okay. Resolution 2020-33. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020, and ending September 30th, 2021, providing for a budget amendment.
This budget amendment is for fiscal year 2021. It was an item that was on the consent agenda for our grant. It is an amendment that is recognizing the award of the grant proceeds from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for the Police Department and recognizing the appropriate expenditure.
Okay. Any questions for Jamie? Chief, you good? You sleep? You awake? Okay. All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing. Look for a motion to approve Resolution 2020-33.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next up, start on this end. Commissioner Becker, City Council report.
I'm good.
Good. Commissioner Smith?
I'd just like to say that I was glad to see the four additional police officers that were sworn in last week. And I still have my question for the chief or whoever it is, is that when are we going to be advertising the deputy chief position?
Okay. Mr. Bankson?
Just to highlight this Saturday, the event to honor our war heroes. I appreciate the historical society putting that together, Dr. Olmstead, and that's gonna be a great event.
That's October 10th, 11:00 AM, starting at Kitlein Nelson Park.
Yeah, the southeast corner.
Yes. So First Street.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Okay, yes. Okay. All right. Edward?
Mayor, Commissioners, I have two things. We, I'll start with the financial update. We have the last month for the FY '20 fiscal year. We've received our last sales tax collections for that year to close that year out. You can see from the projections as we follow through, so we have a full 12 months now. And if you look in the top right of this presentation, you'll see that we budgeted about $11.8 million. That was our budget for fiscal year '20. We will end fiscal year FY '20 with a sales tax collection of 9.6. So you can see that's a 2.15, almost 2.2, right at $2.2 million reduction.
Loss for shortfall.
A loss for shortfall. So if you look down, one of the things I want to point out that I think that we need to continue to watch, to continue to be aware, if you look here, we had anticipated or projected that we would have about a 25% reduction on the collections in the month of September. Keep in mind that the September collections are July's activity. It's actually a 35% reduction. So we've kind of, you know, the month before, we were 25. We're 35 for the month of July, a little bit less. I think some of that is due to the revenue sharing calculation. If you recall back here, they made some adjustments to the revenue sharing calculation. So some of that's there. But I think it's important that we keep in mind that, you know, when we get October's revenue collections, which will be in our new fiscal year, that'll start our, which will be August activity, but we'll receive it in October, to keep in mind that the numbers, you know, the projections that they gave us were not, I think we just need to keep in mind that we may not, it's not come back to that level yet. So I think just, and we'll continue to monitor, I think, you know, we'll continue to monitor this and see where we fall. But I just, I think it's just important to keep that in mind, that we had about a 17% reduction is what they ended up with telling us for fiscal year '21. But I think we need to watch that just to pay attention. So with that in mind, you'll see down here in the other collections that we've had, we've got about almost $400,000 reduction in our recreation impact fees, I mean, our recreation program fees. Keep in mind, so there's some expenses that'll offset with that. We didn't have some of those expenses because we didn't have those programs. So that's the revenue loss. We'll know all of the expenditures and everything once Jamie closes the year and posts back the expenses. So about, I would say in about probably two, three weeks, we'll have a little better picture of kind of where we are. I will tell you that I don't want to say that we're break even. I don't want to say that we're positive. But I do want to say that I think it will be a good place. And when I say that is, I feel comfortable that I think we'll be in the black.
Considering we did know we were going to be short $2.1 million.
Correct. So, and I think a lot of that is kudos to the staff. I don't think it is. It's kudos to the staff for, you know, that last quarter, as you know, those last three or four months, like we told you, we were holding back. When we saw this reduction coming and it started to hit, we, you know, staff went into, did a really good job at trying to do everything they could, you know, to make sure that we could come out on the good side as we entered this fiscal year, so that we would be positive going into our FY '21 year. So I think, you know, it's, a lot of the credit belongs to them because they've worked really, really hard. We didn't sacrifice services. We continued to provide our same service level and good services. And I think we're gonna be, I think the outcome will be good for us in the next probably month or so. We'll know exactly. Like I said, we've got things to post back. There's still a few revenues to post back. There's expenses. As you know, they come in later, but they, we've received the items, but we don't pay for them until the month of October and some of them in November. So that's kind of some positive news, I guess, with a negative shortfall.
Any questions on budget? Okay. Edward, disconnect.
So the other question, the other issue that I have, or the item that I want to bring up, and I've been working, I've been, we've been looking through our utility accounts. And as you know, back in March, April, we stopped disconnects. We weren't disconnecting water and sewer. And then we weren't charging late fees. So we haven't been charging late fees, and we haven't been disconnected, hadn't any disconnects since April. Some of the surrounding areas have already started their disconnects back. Most everybody has started back around July and August. So most people have started back. Winter Garden has decided they're gonna wait till January. OUC has already gone back. Orange County is, still has not made a decision how, where they're going to go. But one of the areas that I want you to, that I'm concerned about is our aging of receivables. We're at 1% when we started this back in March, when we made the disconnects. We're approaching over 9% now. So it's, you know, we're looking for some direction. I think that, I think it's time. I think we're gonna have to, because that, you know, that's, those revenues are pledged to our debt service. So I think it's critical that we look at, that we monitor that number. It was around five or six just a month or so ago. Again, it's approaching nine now. So we're gonna have to, I think that, you know, it's time that we're gonna have to look at what we're gonna do with our disconnects and our late fees. I do, I do want to say one thing, based on the timing and based on your wishes of when you think we should start that back, I think we, what we, what we should do is give a 30-day notice. Notice everybody 30 days that it's coming, that a disconnect could be coming. Give them time, because we have payment arrangements. There are other things, Jamie, I talked to Jamie this morning, that we can look for to maybe to kind of help for those who need help, look, you know, try to give them, put them in the right direction for some help with utility bills. The county has some programs, and there's some other things. So we'll look at those, so that we'll have those available for our citizens. And then we have a payment arrangement. So I think if we give, if we give folks that notice of 30 days to allow them to come, and let us work with those individuals that need that assistance, we can do that. And then do the disconnects after that 30-day notice. And then I would, personally, my opinion would be that we wouldn't start late fees until January 1 on the accounts, to give them time to make these payments and try to get caught up on a payment plan or whatever that may be. So that's one scenario. But I wanted you to know that we're sitting at about 9%. We're at 1%. We're at 9%. So we probably need to, you know, address the disconnects and the late fees. But I think we should give plenty of notice. And I will tell you, so you might ask how many accounts that is? It's about 1,700 accounts that would be subject to the disconnect. Granted, we wouldn't do them all at the same time. They're over billing cycles, because we have a billing cycle each week. But that's about 7% of our accounts.
Mr. Smith?
So are we saying that these individuals have not paid any payments at all since March?
It could be. Some of them, a lot of them have not paid, not since March. They may have not paid maybe just the last two months. So basically what it is, it's those accounts that are 30 and 60 days overdue. So they may have been making payments, but they're now 30, 60 days overdue, that 9%.
Oh, okay. So we don't really have any that are way back to?
We could.
You could. It could be in this number. It could be. We do, it could be in this number. And there's, there are other accounts that are, that could have those past two balances that we would have payment arrangements on. We could have some payment arrangements on some of those customers that have balances that are way back. We have some accounts that we're gonna, that will go into collections. We do have some accounts outstanding in these receivables. That, as you know, we brought recently a piggyback to do collections for those, and those are people who have left the city that we want to go after through the collections process. But this dollar amount is our, these are our current customers that are on that have a 30 or 60-day overdue.
Have we not made any contact with them, any notices to them at all in reference to the back payments? And we just assumed that because of the pandemic, they were struggling, and we just kind of just kept allowing to roll over? Or have we sent them a notice and asked them if they needed assistance or?
Well, they get, they get their monthly bill.
Right.
So they would get their monthly bill. We have not been charging late fees, so they wouldn't see, they wouldn't have a late fee charge. But they would have whatever their prior balances are. And there is a notice on our bill that says that they are subject to disconnect if you, if you don't. But have we actually specifically reached out to every one of them? No, not directly.
And then my last question is, do we have any COVID funding that would be available to assist with customers that are not able to pay?
No, they have it for mortgage assistance and rent assistance, but I don't, that's a good question.
Nothing for utilities?
I, good question. I don't know. I don't think, I don't think Duke gets any money.
So I reached out to Orange County this morning, Fred Wintercamp and Kurt Peterson, who run the CARES program. And unfortunately, public utilities can't
Access.
access it. It has to go through private companies because it's deemed as a revenue
Source.
source instead. So in fact, the program that Kurt provided to me is for power bills only and not water bills that Edward was referencing earlier. So we haven't found anything specific that qualifies for like our utility bill to help with those payments. So the best option I have is they need to come in and try to do a payment arrangement with us. We have seen an uptick in payment arrangements because I believe people are realizing that most other agencies have went through, for example, Tremaine told me this yesterday, that she has eight payment arrangements, six to eight payment arrangements waiting for my approval to approve, so that they can be a part of their regular bill. So what we ask is that if you're unable to pay your bill, try to please come in and see us so that we can make those payment arrangements, so that we can do what's in the best interest of the city financially and for the customer.
Okay. So you say we have sent them those, that notice that if they need some assistance to come in?
No, it has not gone out yet.
Has not?
That'll be a part of the decision. Today, we were planning to have an insert in the bill that's a different color, that addresses cutoffs and late fees. And then any customer that has, that would be subject to disconnection will get a courtesy reminder, like we would normally do when we were doing disconnects. They get a courtesy reminder prior to us disconnecting them.
Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, I mean, I fully agree with giving some runway and some heads up. But again, think about where we're at right now. We're almost to mid-October. By the time you give 30 days notice, what does that get into? It's holiday season. And what I don't want to have happen is we all of a sudden shut off power on Thanksgiving Day or Christmas Eve, something like that. You know, just the optics of that just don't look good.
Commissioner, we do, I will say this, we've always had a policy, and I think if we don't, we need to be sticking to this, because we used to do this in the past, we don't cut off on Fridays, and we don't cut off on holidays. So we would not cut off on a weekend, and we would not cut off on a holiday. After the holiday, we would cut off. And of course, on a Monday, we would cut off. We've always had that practice, not cut off on a weekend or a holiday.
Okay.
But again, I want you to know, we're gonna work with our citizens.
Yeah, yeah.
They come in, we've got a good payment arrangements now. We'll work with them. We spread payments out. We're just saying that we've got to start getting some of those, those accounts have got to start getting some payments on those accounts, or they're gonna get bigger and they're gonna, they're gonna get a little ahead.
We just want to set a policy, just so we, you know, and like you say, it's 45 or 60 days, time to get implemented. Let's, you know, that's what I thought we'd bring it up now and then come up with a...
I do want to say one thing too. And Commissioner Smith, I don't, I don't know if I've talked to you about it. I can't remember. I thought I talked to someone about it. But there are some nonprofits and some churches that have provided assistance. I know that we've had some of our customers that we've, we've sent to a couple nonprofits and some churches, and I can't remember which ones. But we probably, we need to look at that too. If you know some of those or whatever, maybe you could share that with us, and we can share that with some of our citizens as well. But we've had that in the past. I have had some nonprofits that have provided, they have some kind of an assistance program that can help with water utilities.
I think it's time. I like the step approach that you've already laid out. I think it's a good plan, so.
So you're saying January 1st?
Yeah, as you said, you began to start giving the notices and then...
So we'll do the inserts for 30 days. So they're, give them a 30-day notice. Then we'll do disconnect. So they could be subject to disconnect the next, in November. But we won't assess any late penalties until January to give them time to catch the bills up or get on a payment plan.
Yeah. And the assumption is if they're on a payment plan, if they've worked that out with finance, they're not going to get disconnected because they'll be on a payment plan.
Correct. As long as they make their, honor their payment plan. And they also are not subject to late fees as long as they're making their payment plan.
Okay, so I need a motion to...
Say that again, before you make your motion. Make sure we understand.
So we'll provide notice. We've already done our first billing cycle in October. So we'll start with our second billing cycle in October, which is tomorrow. So we'll do 30 days from the 8th. So November the 8th, we'll notice from October the 8th to November the 8th, we'll notice, everybody, with the insert in the bill, so they know. And then November the 9th, you will be subject to disconnects. We will not disconnect on the weekends or on a holiday. And then you will not be subject to a late fee until January 1.
And you will work out some, a payment plan is the preferable option.
They can come in and work it out.
Yeah.
Yes.
I do want to say something about the payment plan. So since Tremaine has come on board, we have implemented a new process for the payment plans, for the accounts that are on payment plans. During the audit for 2019, we discovered that there was no mechanism being utilized in the utility billing system for accounts that were on payment plans. And there is a way to do that. So now the payment plans apply to their bill. So whatever their current bill is due, say they have a $50 payment planned arrangement, it's a part of the current amount due now. So we have implemented that process because there was, honestly, there was no monitoring of the people that were on the payment plans up until recently. So that is a control that we've implemented in place as a part of the evaluation process of the utility billing process, that we can ensure that these people are making their payments on their arrangements. And Tremaine is monitoring those on a cycle-to-cycle basis.
So now the bill would say your current amount due plus your $50 payment arrangement, then brings it to a total?
Right.
Okay.
All right.
So I'll make a motion according as stated.
As currently stated by Edward Bass. Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Michael, anything for Attorney's report?
No, nothing to add, aside from surviving this first virtual City Council meeting. I hope to be back at the next one.
All right.
I hope so too, because you look better than Jim.
Ouch.
All right. Mayor's report. Phew. Okay. First up, Susan Bone is up to be our city quirk. And so I guess everybody knows, you know, she's been here six years, and her, before that, she served City of Apopka as a special project coordinator from 2012 to 14. And before that, Big Law Firm, Broad and Cassell, from June 2005 to November 2011. So done a great job for us here at the city. And, you know, as Linda's retired and only helping us now with, through the special election. But Susan's been taking it up and running everything, including some of the things that Linda would have done. And so And so she's done a marvelous job. And so she's up for, for the city clerk's job and we're just looking for approval from the city council. Any questions, any tough questions for Susan?
I think she already got a trial by fire with the special election.
Semi-tough. So it's funny, right? So when, when Jeff started, it's like my email inbox blew up with public services requests. There just seemed to be a bunch. And on the flip side of that, you know, really, my only engagement with the clerks is really, you know, during public records request or, you know, during our meetings here and stuff like that. But similar to Jeff, you know, over the last probably 10 to 12 months, we've gotten a lot of public records requests. And it's, it's daunting to say the least because it's multiple parties asking for a lot of information. And so my only request of you is just make sure that, you know, there's some mechanism in place that I can wrap my head around what's in the backlog of what maybe is requested by our residents or whomever else is requesting public records, just so that we understand the timing and the pacing or when those people can expect it. Because that's the biggest question that I get asked is when can I get it? I've asked for this, when can I get it? And so just that sort of dialogue is what I'm interested in.
I mean, I think part of that is depending on how, if she's got to go search hard records or whether it's just an email search is a whole lot quicker. But maybe we could do that is, you know, in your, because she has the initial response, which she does within 24 hours. Maybe you could say if it's, if it's an email from, you know, me to you or whatever, then you could say, you know, I can have that, you know, relatively quickly. But if it's, if it's a record, if it's a, if it's a public services record about a, you know, a water line, you know, that we put in the ground in 1987, then that's going to be a little more challenging. But yeah, I think we could, we could, something we could probably add to the.
Yeah, maybe create a spreadsheet or something that we can kind of share with you.
So Commissioner Smith?
Well, I just want to say congratulations. My interaction with her has been with the cemetery. And she has been very helpful in, in getting those things resolved and with a lot of patience because the records, you know, date back before the age of the computer. So she's been doing a very good job and I appreciate all that she has done.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll echo that. And again, I think with, as Commissioner Becker said, a lot of the requests on top of the special election, all at the same time. And so like I said, trial by fire, but you've always been a pleasure to have interaction with, you know, in the office and whatnot. So thank you for being on board.
Okay. Need a motion to approve. Susan Bone is the next city clerk of Apopka. So moved. Got a motion by Commissioner Bankson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries unanimously. Cool. All right, you've got the updates on coronavirus with you. It's, it's, it's got a little bit of a trend upwards. I, you know, I quit trying to figure out what this all means, but you've got the numbers there in front of you. Next up, I know we've, everybody's been getting emails about flooding in Apopka and multiple locations. So it's a little more complicated to put together a presentation. So I just want to let you know that on November 4th, Jeff and his team are going to come back to us. I mean, I give you the couple, the main issues we're facing. One is Sheila Oaks, Lake Hammer, and then the, the area around Hobby Lobby and Border Lake and Lake Cortez.
And Lake Bankson.
And the problem with that, I mean, Lake Hammer is all us. That's 100% Apopka, you know, no questions. With this one, we're, we're not getting a lot of help or, you know, consideration from DOT, from Seminole County and Orange County. Because I think it's a, it's, it's a joint problem and a joint solution. Because it's, both of those solutions are going to be expensive. Whatever we do is going to be expensive. But we've also had some other areas where we've got some flooding. Obviously, we, one of the first things we want to start out the discussion is how much rain have we had? How's that relate to, you know, to 2004, 2006 when we had some of those hurricanes? So we know kind of our baseline and is this an aberration or is this a trend? And so he's going to go through the whole process and kind of get us to where, you know, we, we start to look at solutions which will be expensive. So, so Jeff, thanks for, you know, getting that together. So we got, he's got three weeks to go, so get on it.
And Mayor, if I can request, Jeff, on Sandpiper, the new development there, I had someone just this week mention as I was out walking that there's still canvas in the drainage area. Can we just make sure that they're moving along on that and they're not blocking any of that drainage there? Because it's created some issue in the area.
Okay. Orange County, it's already over, but I thought at least to let you know that Orange County did the COVID testing out at Kelly Park, which is interesting because, you know, it's closed. They did it from 8:00 AM this morning until 1:00 PM. We did put out a, it was in the newsletter last, or yesterday. So they, so that's another reason for people. We've only got about, I think, 400 people that are signing up for the weekly newsletter. So if you've got people out there that want to be in the know on, on things that are happening, you know, please sign up for that weekly newsletter because certain things we can't, you know, it's too quick to turn around for the monthly newsletter. So suggest everybody out there, you know, sign up for the City of Apopka weekly newsletter. Okay, next up, we got, as we, you know, try to reopen the, you know, the city, we got some events coming up. And so I just want to make sure we're kind of all on the same page. A lot of it has to do with parks and rec. Just so you know, all of our athletic programs are up and running full. And we're, I think, 70 to 80%, you know, at normal capacity. So here's what we're, as you know, farmer's market is running weekly. So what we're going to do for, we do our, normally do our tree lighting. We're going to do it in conjunction with the farmer's market on December the 3rd. So we'll do the tree lighting along with farmer's market on, on December the 3rd. The Christmas parade for now is, is subject to go. That's with Sartoma, partnership with Sartoma. I think one of the things I've seen at one of the other cities that they, they limited or they eliminated any of the, the street vendors to try to, because well, that'd be the worst thing you have is some street vendor to had COVID and going down, you know, all the way down Park Avenue. So we're going to try to, we're trying to do our best to social distance, you know. We're even, even thinking about maybe stretching the parade out a little farther, maybe go to Dream Lake, another street or two and try to get people not as bunched up so we can. So we're going to try to do what we can to, to make this as, as, you know, safe as possible for, for those that are, that are going to participate.
And what's the date on that again?
That's 12/12. Also, that night, we've got, the Philharmonic is, is going to, we're working out, hopefully have a signed agreement or probably will bring back to you next, next commission meeting for a concert that night, so 12/12.
On the same night?
Yes.
Can we make notation maybe with the Sartoma to have something that rolls down that parade that advertises that?
Sure.
Because I think that would.
Yep, 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 okay.
Because that was, that was an amazing.
Yeah, they did, they did an amazing job, yes. Okay. So what we're, we're planning on doing at this point, unless y'all have a, you know, a different opinion, is all concerts and events will start to resume in January. Obviously, we can always pull that back. You know, one of the things we were, we were just getting started was that weekly, our weekly concerts. And so we'd like to start back in January if, if everything is, you know, still moving in the right direction. So the indoor programs, youth are participating in Launch Ed, you know, still at, at our center, at Fran Carlton. Educational programs in a very limited capacity. So here's the big one, seniors. I know Commissioner Smith, because you're the most senior on this, this council, thought it's probably more important to you, but.
Yes, thank you.
So here's what I thought and, and obviously it's just, just a thought from my perspective is, they've, they've been chomping at the bit to get back and do things. So I thought we could do one of two things. One is start back November the 1st, after November 1st, outside. If they want, you could do the Zoom outside, you could do the chair exercise outside. We could even do the painting outside. If they don't want to do it outside, and a lot of them, they have mixed emotions, wait until January 1st to do our senior programs. But, you know, I'm, I'm here at any, you know, I'm not, you know, solid in that decision.
I think outside, beginning November 1st.
Okay. If they want to do it, now they might just come back and 80% of people said, I'm not going to do it. And then we just, then if we go indoor, then January? Is that? Okay, so everybody good with that? All right. Indoor rentals, same, we're going to start January 1st. And we're going to, you know, we're going to make sure that everybody completes a COVID-19 waiver. And we're going to make sure that they're, you know, they're doing what they're, their part to, to make sure that they don't spread the virus. So that's all the programs we got. And so if everybody's kind of good with that, then we'll, we'll let Brian know that that's where we're at. So, and last, let's see here, what have I got? One other. Yeah, and then we're going to, kind of interesting, we got, we got, somebody reached out to us about doing a shredding event. I guess it's popular, Winter Park's done one and, and Winter Garden has done one, very popular. You just bring your, 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 your financial documents, you want shredded. So we're, we're working with waste management to put together a shredding event with the, the November 19th farmer's market. So what you would do is you'd come down first going east on First Street and pull into Edward's Field and then put your records in. You could, you can actually see them being shredded, so there's no, no question. And then, so it's supposedly very popular and we're going to probably end up doing also a plastic bags, the plastic bags, you know, which we're recycling at Apopka Elementary. Add that and we're, if we can add something else like an electronics recycling or something else, you know, we'll, if we get a sponsor or something, we'd like to add that to the shredding event on the 19th, so.
Is there a limit on how much you can shred?
That's, we're still talking about that? Yeah, we, we think we're going to, because what we don't want is a doctor's office come down there and, you know, do all their shredding for them. Your church? So with that, I think we have completed our adjourn. Thank you.